I'd like to call the Belle Plaine Public Schools Regular Board meeting Monday, October 28th, 2019 to order. Six o'clock PM. We have one member that's absent. That's Terry Morrison. First up, we have the finance meeting.
Best part of the meeting.
You're on Chuck.
First of all, did anyone have any questions on the bills or expenditures for the month? We addressed some earlier, but any concerns? Another item is the garage, which we've been discussing for a couple of months now, but it was agreed on that we'd go out and look at a sixty by forty foot structure for a garage. Something that'll fit both of our vehicles and have room for some expansion, including a couple of outside bathrooms for utilization for the summer months. So the preliminary estimates are one hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred. We put in the budget thirty-five for a garage, knowing that it's probably going to be a little bit low, so we've discussed that if we're going to build this thing, it's build it right. So that figure really includes, it's going to be a heated garage with heated floors, the bathrooms, and an office space for either Steve or Jeff or somebody to be located there. And then to house the equipment and the vehicles. So I guess the city approved the plan, which is here. I think you guys saw this at the board workshop. These are the bathrooms, entrance ways, whatever, but without formal approval tonight, because we just kind of got these numbers in, we just like, we'd like to get started with the concrete work before it gets too cold. So if anyone has any issues or doesn't want to go forward or wants to table this, we'd at least like the blessing of the board to go ahead, because they can start as early as Friday doing some of the dirt work. As long as the concrete gets done, then throughout the winter months, they can start on the actual garage. So that can be a project that's in no hurry to finish throughout, but we'd like to get it done sooner than later, so we can get some of that equipment inside.
Couple of things I just want to comment on this too, though, before you two are. So we started, remember, with a much smaller version, and through conversations we had with the utilization of the green space at Chatfield in the summertime, not having restrooms or drinking fountains available, we will accommodate both of those, but by adding bathrooms, that added, you know, let's just say thirty-five to forty thousand dollars in cost and expense. It also allowed us, in the variance with the city, though, is it will have an office space as well or a person there, so it's not just a freestanding standalone structure, because remember, those were two parcels of land. The other thing is we expanded it to sixty by forty. Ever since I have been here, though, one of the things I hear over and over is we don't have enough storage. And I'm going to talk about another change that we've made now also to try to help get us some more storage internally within our buildings. But when I sat down with Jeff, I said I want to have something that I don't have to hear about storage anymore, so we shouldn't have to hear about storage issues any further after this goes up. And, you know, honestly, to heat it, that's probably a twenty-five thousand dollar cost, but it will be turnkey when it's done. It'll be ready to use and it will be, the other thing it does is it adds to our facility space. So when we talk about getting long-term facility maintenance money or other monies, it'll give us more square footage, and our monies are distributed based on the square footage that we have as well, that at age of buildings, there's a lot of things that go into calculating that. Another thing that's important to realize is this money will come out of two pockets. Some of it will come out of long-term facility maintenance, and that will be the concrete work we'll do. We'll just be redoing some of the existing that's already there. And, you know, that's roughly thirty thousand dollars probably of the project, maybe upwards closer to forty. And then the rest of it's going to come out of capital. So those are not things that we can, you know, those are, we talk a lot about the budget items of where we can spend money. Those are not areas that we could hire employees, they're not areas that we can do anything else with but this kind of work. And we have healthy amounts of money in both of those areas right now. So we're going to address the need, we're going to add to our square footage in our district, and hopefully we solve some of this. This is one solution to solving some of the space and facility needs, and I'm going to talk about another change under the superintendent update that's going to help us hopefully free up some of that facility space as well.
Right. Because this basically puts us in the same capital budget that we had, because we had the builder, the roofing come in a little bit under what we had.
It's, that's the long-term facility maintenance, it's a little different, but we're going to finish fiscal eighteen with the operating capital balance of seven hundred and fifty-four thousand. So we're actually adding sixty-five thousand from fiscal nineteen. We already budgeted thirty-five for this project, so, and if we take, you know, a hundred, let's say a hundred and forty, take forty for long-term facility and maintenance, we did thirty-five, so an additional sixty-five will have to come out of capital.
Well, we put sixty-five in this year, that's what you're saying, right? So at the end of the day, when we do long-term facility, capital, and everything else, even though it was a thirty-five budget, we didn't spend sixty-five we planned, there's a hundred. We do the concrete, the thirty thousand, not of long-term facility maintenance. You're still within the budget of what we would have been anyway, so.
Yeah, and we're projected for fiscal twenty to be at a balance of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, something in capital, so as long as we're over five hundred thousand in that account, we'd like to keep that much in there, just for things that come up. And we'll still be above that, even with this project, even though I know we're spending a little bit more on the cameras and the vaping devices, but we still should be okay and stay over that five hundred thousand dollar bogey. Back in, I guess fiscal seventeen, we were at four fifty-six, so we're still going to be above the fiscal seventeen level in that account, so we have more than enough, I guess, is the point to sustain. This is one, this is a one-time cost, it's not like it's an ongoing hundred and some thousand every year out of this account. It'll just be the one-time expense, so. Any questions? So do we got a thumbs up just to keep on trucking with this? I know you, good.
Yeah, so just so you know, the goal would be that we potentially will do the excavating this Friday and begin concrete work the following week, I think was the goal that we talked about today with Jeff. So, and once we get the footings in, then we're good to go. I mean, obviously, it'll get cold and snow, but once you're in the ground, it doesn't matter. You can build all winter once you have the footings in, so.
Yep, and we're still waiting for, we don't have to go out for a formal bid process, because the project isn't over a hundred and seventy-five thousand, but we're still receiving, and I call them quotes, but some contractors are still calling bids, but we're still getting three of those.
We're still working through Mr. Aions.
Yep, yep, so we're still doing the due diligence as far as that goes.
Yeah, they would be more the bits for the electric, plumbing, concrete, excavation, there's some other material pieces, but yeah, Steve, and then, and then we're, again, the goal is to have some students work on this, some of our more advanced kids that want to go down a path of construction trades, which would be a great opportunity for them as well.
Yep.
Don't have to put a formal quote.
We will, we'll go, in November, I talked to Chuck today about at the work session, we might take action on if it's a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, but I just wanted, because of where we are weather-wise and we can get this done, the city, city got our process through, just time, being timed, because the other thing, you know, if you wait on this, we wait till the spring, this is going to be a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollar project, you know, it just keeps getting more expensive, so, but we didn't want to do is, at this point, we'll be at excavating and maybe some concrete work, and then in November, we'll just take action on the whole project. If for some reason it doesn't get approved, then we'll stop with the concrete work that we did at that point, but.
Yep, so we'll bring like the formal quotes, and you'll, you can vote on the lowest one or the one we decide to go with, that's what we'll do in November. If it has to be at the work session, we can do it at the work session. Hopefully, we have them by then, but, so that's at least the plan anyway. And if not, it'd be at the business meeting in November.
Okay.
That's all I got for finance, unless somebody else has anything, questions on anything else?
All right, we'll move on. Next up, we have presentations here. I want to make a change, three point one, we will add Ann Carson's to that, and then three point two, we'll make that to the envoy presentation by the staff. So hold on, we're going to have Ann go first, then you guys, okay? Sorry.
I will read this again, Ann. Belle Plaine Public School District welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward the comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for community, speakers must present their testimonial in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversations with speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concern presented. If you choose to address the board, you will be asked to state your name and address for the record. You will then have five minutes to address the board with your comments. If many people wish to speak on the same topic, the board chair may ask those wishing to speak to designate a spokesperson, and the board will allow longer time. When you have completed your comments, you will be thanked for addressing the board. The board will ask administrators present to review the concerns presented. If public follow-up is required, it will be presented at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you. Ann Carson's, address three one six Shea Street here in Belle Plaine. So the roles of the school library and the school librarian have changed since probably every one of us in this room have attended school. That fact can't be disputed, but the importance of the role itself is still justifiable. College librarians have been reporting for a decade or more that the students who come to them for help are asking the most basic of questions. They see Google as a quotable resource without a second thought as to who may have written an article, or even if there are more trustworthy sources available. These students aren't receiving the right kind of instruction in middle and high school about how to find quality information. Students are sending digital photographs and messages without a thought that these never go away and could cause them a college scholarship or even a job later in life. Kids are losing out on a space in school where they can relax, gather their thoughts, have meaningful conversations with peers and adults, and get lost in a story. Our students and staff are missing out on so much without media specialists. Students are missing out on book talks about the newest and most amazing titles. Teachers are missing a collaboration partner who could help with all types of classroom instruction, student research, iPad apps, finding the perfect story or article to reinforce an important lesson, and more. Kids aren't getting the kinds of technology and literature-rich lessons tied right into their everyday work that would help connect their learning targets to their everyday lives. School librarians do provide direct instruction to students. They find the best-fit books for students because they stay current with the newest books, authors, and trends in literature. School librarians help teach students about quality digital resources that the state of Minnesota pays for, so that all of our residents can access them at any time. School library media specialists show teachers and students cool new ways to share what they've learned with each other, with the community, and with the world at large, while keeping their personal and private information protected. Have our students in town here ever chatted with an author, astronaut, or an actor via Skype? School library media specialists are collaborators. They are connectors. They are provided with a unique set of skills that help them to be at the center of the school community, to reach into every classroom and provide teachers and students with rich opportunities. And all these are things that our students lose after they leave Chatfield Elementary. Let's set aside the financial aspects of a staffed, outfitted, and furnished school library for just a moment. Why are Belle Plaine Public Schools sitting idle? Well, Jordan, Lisa or Henderson, Norwood Young America, Sibley East, Watertown Mayor, and Tri-City United all have a licensed school library media specialist on staff. New Prague, St. Peter, Mankato, Prior Lake Savage, Eastern Carver County, Shakopee, Burnsville Eagan Savage also have school library media specialists licensed on staff. Don't we all in this room ultimately want to provide the best education for our kids? How are we doing that if we aren't giving them the human resource of a school librarian? Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. All right, moving on, three point two, we will have the envoy presentation.
All right, so, good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce Ellie Beggs. Ellie's been in our district now for four years, ten years in education. She teaches seventh grade social studies and is one of our higher implementers of envoy strategies. So last week, she allowed Margot and I to come into her classroom and videotape what was going on and some of her strategies she will speak to tonight and how it has benefited her classroom and her classroom culture, so. Ellie, take it away.
Hi, everybody, I'm Ellie. Kind of nervous to present to adults, because I talk to kids most of the time, so I have really loved Envoy. Envoy's probably been some of the best training I've ever had as a teacher. So my first year here, I really struggled with classroom management, and Mindy can attest to that. I sent a lot of kids out, and I sent quite a few to the office, but ever since doing Envoy, going non-verbal with the students has really helped me manage my classroom a lot better, helped me build better relationships with kids, so it's not, like, for example, if a student's not doing what I need them to do, it's not a verbal prompt, it's a visual prompt. So it totally repairs that relationship, because a lot of times, kids want to do the power struggle with you, and they want to win the argument, but a lot of times, I can just go non-verbal with them, and it repairs that, or it keeps that relationship. So one thing, I think Mindy took a picture of my entrance directions, so I have this whiteboard right in front of my, right in front of the door when the kids walk in, so it's the first thing that they see, and there are always directions of something that they need to do to get ready. So for this day, I needed them to pick up a paper from the blue bin, they needed an iPad and a pencil, and I needed them to open Schoology. So this saves me so much time of giving directions to kids that they are ready when that bell rings, and I can just start. I mean, it saves me at least five minutes of instructional time if they can do all of those things. I'd say ninety percent of the time, they do all of them right before they come in. Other days is, or some days are better than others. Another thing that I like to do is I like to do pictures, so it's just really quick for them. It's like less reading, and I can tell, like, hey, Mrs. Beggs needs an iPad, a pencil, and Schoology, and I don't have to read a whole lot. So I think that they also like that, because then they're prepared and they're ready. So this lesson that Mindy showed was, we're doing the Declaration of Independence, we're doing blackout poetry. So one thing that I always do is I put a lot of directions up on the board of what they need to do. I always look and point to what they need to be looking at, instead of looking at me. If I look at them, then they look at me. If I look at the work or look at the directions, then they look at the directions. This is a lot of freeze body that you're seeing, I'm just waiting for students, so I stand in one spot, I'm silent. And this class is particularly doing a really good job of paying attention to what I'm talking to, so I'm not having to stop and freeze body and get their attention again. Mindy's presence probably helped that a little bit. Again, here I go visually again with directions and pointing, say, you're thinking, you're thinking in your mind, so you're not talking out loud. Evidently, I talk a lot with my hands, too, I can see. So I show them, you can shout out by holding my hands out. That took a lot of training at the beginning of the school year, but now they just do it right away. I don't have to wait for them, they just go ahead and they do it right away.
I'll check in here a little bit. So when you play a video on the screen, we'll talk about the most important twenty seconds. Ellie's modeling that, she should be watching the screen. It seems basic, but she's modeling that by her freeze body and by her attention to the screen, it's called screen nets.
Thanks, Mindy.
And, you know, she talked about signal alone, and you will see a little bit more how it's raise your hand to speak, it's turn and talk, it's share out. You know, they always had a joke at Envoy training, if you want students to share out, and they raise their hand, you don't get mad at them. But if you want them to raise their hand and they share out, then you get mad. So it kind of brings that safety to the classroom of what students are supposed to do, especially in your more well-managed classrooms that kind of require that, they're a little bit oriented, so that's safe to, you know, if you want them to share out, you want them to be very excited.
So I've just explained a whole bunch of directions to them. They have a document in front of them on their iPad that explains everything in a lot of detail, and then I created exit directions you can see over on the left-hand side of the screen, that's like short and sweet, directions of what they need to do. So a lot of times, I get kids who are like, Mrs. Beggs, I don't know what I'm supposed to do next. So I can just point to the board and say, it looks like you're here. And they're like, oh, yeah. And then they can get right back to work, so it's not me re-explaining directions to them. They have detailed directions in front of them, and they have the short and sweet ones, too. So this is me, I'm mid-scene, is what I like to call it. It's the most important twenty seconds, so I have kids, I say, go, go ahead and go to work. Sometimes I'll have kids shoot their hand up right away, and I just say, mm-mm, look at the board, get started. So after I can see everyone has started, then I start to walk around and help the kids. Most of the time, they answer their own questions once they get started, and then they don't need me as much. So everybody was working, so then I start to circulate around and ask kids if they need help. So I didn't really mention a whole lot of it, but Mindy did. A lot, I just do this a lot, turn and talk, they just know, turn and talk to each other. I do signal the mode a lot. I do get blurters, but then I just remind, here it is, and then they go right ahead, right away. Mrs. Beggs, I know. So just reinforcing that that's what I'm asking them to do. They don't get it right a hundred percent of the time, but it doesn't take very long to train them, and they, they're really, really good at it, and they know what to expect. So I love Envoy, it has really, really helped me be a better teacher. I can focus a lot more on content, less on behavior with students, and it's helped me build really good relationships with kids. I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
How long it take you for the seventh graders just to adapt to that? Take, or just still?
Honestly, sometimes they need to be re-taught, which is totally fine, and I think it's totally worth it to take a couple of minutes and re-teach, but maybe like the first week of school, they start to get it, and then they kind of police each other. They're like, hey, Mrs. Beggs got her hand up, so you need to put your hand up. So they really help each other, too, and some classes are better than others at it. Like, this class has, I think, twenty-two students in it, and they are amazing at it. I get so much more done with their class, just because I don't have to constantly talk to them about what we're doing or behavior or anything like that. My bigger classes, it gets to be a little bit more difficult sometimes, just because of the amount of volume sometimes in the room. One other one, I think I did it right at the beginning, it's above pause whisper, so you really wait for like the lull in the room of the noise level, and then you come in above them, you wait, you pause, and then you say, thank you, or ready to go. So sometimes with a bigger class, sometimes it's more difficult for me, but I'm learning too as I go. Sometimes I just have to wait extra long for my fifth hour, as opposed to like my second hour, so.
The one thing that, this stuff seems so basic, but, and I know we've talked about this before, but we had an opportunity administratively, we went and spent an entire day at elementary, middle school, and high school, and we were able to watch examples of this, and what we did is we all walked in, we had a little chair, we sat on it, we all had microphones on, and then the envoy trainer was with us, and she's actually the head of, she's doing all of this work in Minnesota, she's like, her and another lady are probably the foremost thinkers in this area, but she would constantly be talking about in these, you know, here's where she's above pause whisper, or that idea of something is basic, of looking at the board and walking the kids through it instead of looking at them, because they stare at you and then they're dazing off and take it back to school. When you're actually walking through it and looking at the content, their ability to focus and connect with content is so much greater, and when you, when you're in a classroom with Envoy, like, teachers can achieve certification in it, when you see it, it is unbelievable, the difference between if you go in there and then you go to a room where it's not, where it's just the traditional stand-up and teach, and it is really incredible, and I, actually, this week, Margot, Ben, and Jessica, so we sent Kim, Mindy, Dave and Leanne went last year, but from seven-thirty AM to five-thirty every day, they start with a kind of an intro, and then they're in classrooms all day, watching and learning this, it's green chair coaching, and then how to administratively, how to help develop staff in this area, and then they have a debrief for an hour every night, and it literally goes from seven-thirty to five-thirty for all five of these days, and they're there this week. It's up in the Brooklyn Park area, I think they started at elementary this morning, but they'll work through the levels as well, and it's incredible. I mean, I always said that classroom management was more, was a lot more dependent on your personality, and teachers either have it or don't. After seeing this, I don't believe it. I believe you can give people skills to do this, and it's incredible to watch.
Yeah, and I have had the green chair coaching a couple of times, and it's probably the most direct feedback that I can grow from, that I've gotten from administration of what I do in the classroom, and sometimes, I mean, as teachers, we don't realize that we're doing Envoy, and it's great that admin can just point that out to us, too, so that we can emphasize that more in our classrooms as it works.
And I think coming from just like the English language learner perspective, and evenly special education, those different types of learners, they know what to expect with just those non-verbal cues and the, how to feel comfort, or comfortable in a classroom when they may not know what's going on. I think that's really great.
I didn't do any stick people drawings for these, but I do, I do some pretty awesome stick drawings for things that kids need to do, and it's, and it's just great for kids that just can't read very fast either. So there's some kids that just read really slow, and sometimes just a very simple stick figure picture helps them figure out what they're supposed to be doing, too. So it's, it's great.
So can you talk to, and it can be Mindy or Ryan, whoever, when this builds, so this is the first year with staff, right?
Second year.
Second year with staff, so if this builds through, what is it going to do for consistency in students? Because, say, next year's going to be better, because they know what to, what is the building aspect of that, and for you, how, how much has it's, so I guess what I'm asking the question is, is you're saying you're teaching more in your classroom, which is better for our students? Is that because of Envoy? Because of consistency, because of just the art of your teaching also?
I really think it's, for me, it's Envoy, because just that classroom management piece, like, I can get so much more content done with students. I mean, five minutes a day extra just by not handing out papers and having kids get extra stuff, like, just that in and of itself, that's tons of time throughout a school year. And just, you know, limiting all of the little tiny conversations that you have to have with kids about instructions is also a huge time saver, too. I can just point to the board, they know what to look for, so that's a huge time saver, too, I think, for me.
I think the engagement that you see out of students is at such a higher level, and I think that meantime you engage kids, like you're saying, you can get more content, but there's also more, the memory or the understanding of the content is greater. I also think the lack of, and you talked about it right at the beginning, there's no defamation of kids in this, like, it's completely using non-verbal, so, I mean, you say this all the time, and I'm probably the same way, like, for me, this would have been good, because when the teacher does have to correct me, and then I get angry. You know, we're here, it's just a simple, non-verbal, oops, you know, like, now I'm not, I'm not frustrated, I just adjust. You know, I don't go through all those emotions that I would have been, and I stay engaged. And I'll say, I mean, and we'll have an elementary presentation probably at the next part. Um, and, and I'll say, I mean, and we'll have an elementary, um, presentation probably at the next board meeting. You see it throughout the district. I mean, Mindy and I were talking about this today. And it's just a credit to our staff. So I think what you're saying that is how much more comfortable the kids will have as we continue to develop it, you know, they're just become so used to it. So like Ally's saying, like it, it took a week or so. Well, there were some teachers that were already, I mean, we introduced it and went through it last year. So there were a lot of teachers that were using it last year, obviously. So the kids have some experience with turn and talk and, you know, all of those, the different nonverbals. So it's only gonna get better and it's a K-12 initiative. Um, there's some really great work going on in this at Chadfield. There's some great work going on at Oak Crest. You know, the thing for me, and that's why our administrators are there and were there last year, and Ally hit on that, is there's nothing more frustrating, you know, as a teacher than when you're trying to learn something or you're getting professional development and the leadership knows less than some of your own colleagues maybe, or, or doesn't, they're walking alongside you instead of actually knowing and can guide you. So one of the goals in this is we've had people have chosen some of the gems as a part of their professional growth and development opportunities for their teacher evaluation piece. But I want the administrators to be trained to actually have these conversations because that's what helps teachers grow. It's actually meaningful. Um, so I think that's what we hope to see is that it becomes more meaningful and more a part of practice as we go. Um, and you, like I said, you see it all over the district. I mean, there are a lot of staff. And then I include some of the updates that I send out every week. You'll see examples that administrators are including what they see in classrooms that's happening in all of our buildings with this. So.
Well, you think five minutes isn't a big deal, but on a hundred and sixty-nine days, it's a big deal, right?
Yeah.
So that's a lot of minutes that we can use for instructional time versus discipline and all that kind of stuff too. So.
Yeah, that's been like the biggest thing for me is just that extra time with kids. And I have very, very few power struggles with kids about behavior anymore because they don't, they want the last word and so do I. And I mean, envoy makes it possible that I don't even have to go there. They, I just, this is the expectation and I'm gonna stand here and I'm gonna wait for you to do it. And they don't want me to stand there, so they're going to do it. Um, so I mean, and it really just, it saves those relationships. And that's what makes teaching so great, is those relationships.
Well, it makes a kid more open to learn also, right? So if they're combating with you, they're not engaged in the learning.
Yeah, they're thinking about how much they hate me in the moment instead of what we're learning about. So absolutely, absolutely.
Is there any else?
So one thing just to close this, uh, we've had to go up to the northern metro to be able to do this. On Friday, they're actually gonna come down here and we're gonna use our own staff at Chadfield, Oak Crest and High School. And they're gonna do the green chair coaching down here. You know, I think a goal for them and for us would be able to be, and we have teachers who have volunteered. Are you one of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's teachers in all of our buildings that are gonna be doing this. But I think one of their goals too is to get a district in the south that they can bring people to and do this. And I think people that I know, my sister teaches in Anoka, I'd have been, full disclosure. Um, she will say that as these come around, Leanne was in her building last year. Um, she gets better at the process because she's having other teachers come in and watch her. So it even ramps up her skill set to, to do this work. And, and she loves it as well. Um, so I think that's an our positive for us. On Friday, they're gonna be here doing it. And we have staff that are, are capable, competent and understanding enough and have volunteered to actually do this on Friday. So our own administrators are gonna go on and do green chair coaching with our own staff, which will be awesome.
That's good. That's cool. Awesome.
Okay, am I good now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ally and Mindy. Okay, moving on. Um, any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? If not, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Number five is the consensus items. At our board books, we have the last month's board meeting minutes, all the payables. Um, like, uh, the personnel item. And then we have the donations for last month, which I will read. State Bank of Belle Plaine to Chadfield Elementary Backpack Program and school supplies for students of one hundred and ninety dollars. Teresa Coolman for general support of fifty dollars. Frontstream, Oak Crest, general support of twenty-five dollars. Belle Plaine Kid Wrestling Community Education, one thousand dollars. Chadfield Elementary FIA Department of one thousand dollars. Oak Crest Elementary FIA Department of one thousand dollars. Redeemer Lutheran Church, Chadfield Elementary School Supplies for one hundred eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Oak Crest Elementary School Supplies of one hundred eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Belle Plaine Junior Senior High, School Supplies of one hundred eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Marion Eschota, Food Service, Underfunded Students of fifty dollars. And Shepner and Associates of General Support of one hundred dollars. Makes a grand total of three thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Again, thank you for all of those wonderful donations to the district. It's great. So with that, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the consensus items.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item six is discussion items. Uh, six point one is a superintendent update.
Yeah, I already took one of mine off, which I was gonna add is envoy. Um, we did, uh, I'm gonna, a little bit about, uh, social emotional learning. Um, I'm gonna talk more about it probably in November. Um, but we have been selected, we're gonna present at a state level conference and some of the work that we're doing. Um, and have also been asked to, um, apply for a showcase event and some of the stuff, uh, that we're doing around vaping. Amy Holstein has done some great work. Um, there'll be some more updates coming. Hopefully I confirm some of that up by November. Um, one, we're actually gonna set up a bedroom, um, and invite parents in. It's about a two-hour presentation where they get to go through a room and figure out where kids can hide these kind of things. And it's only parents. Um, really good experience. Some schools have used it. Um, also using vape educate. When kids get caught vaping, it's not just a punitive thing. There's a process they go through where they take a free assessment and all those kind of things. Um, but we've been asked also to potentially share that work that we're doing. Amy was at a volleyball game. I know Handel's really reaching our parents of our athletes as well. Um, and our, uh, November newsletter actually is gonna focus on this. We're gonna talk a little bit about what we're doing. Uh, we also, at seventh grade, teen issues, I think it is with Kate, we met Katie Graff the other day. And she goes through a very extensive, shows a lot of paraphernalia, all the different kinds of things, you know, we don't run away from it, but we actually, kids, we know what this stuff looks like. We know what the impact is. Does a great job as well. So that'll all be Chelsea Network and I'm putting that together now. So that'll be another piece. Um, the garage update, we went through that earlier. Um, right now, I'd say around a hundred and forty thousand dollars, turnkey, fully heated bathrooms, drinking fountains. That'll be accessible for our kids in all of our summer events and community ed out on the, the Chadfield Green Space. We don't have bathrooms out there, which has been raised as a concern. So we'll be able to solve that. As well as start to tap into the, um, storage issues we have across the district. Um, another thing, um, we've slowly and surely, you know, looking at how we've been s- staffed administratively and having people in this building and around. And we've had some conversation about moving people out into the buildings. Um, just for more support, uh, so earlier this year, I think we talked about, we moved Jessica and Kelly out to Oak Crest. You know, Ben being new, it just, Jessica had been in that building before as well. She's still all over the district. I pass her in the hall at Chadfield. I see her here at the district office. Um, so she still makes her rounds, but Kelly being out there, just a, a wealth of knowledge and just another body to be able to help in the buildings. Um, one of the, the things that's been an issue since I got here was, uh, scanning records. And I have experienced in this in a different district too, but, um, Jeff was all about, we have to scan our records. We have records back to the eighteen hundreds that we can't get rid of, but we wanna get a digital copy. So a year ago, we did get all the scanning equipment we needed. We have it all set up. And you know that some of the cold weather days, we had to parent some of that, but we haven't made much of a dent in that. Um, that, um, P-cards typically, a lot of that's used at the high school. You know, people always needing cards, need to get cards to go buy things. Um, Chris has always had all of that on her plate here in this building. She's managed the vehicles, all the keys and those transfers, which are typically high school, some Oak Crest people as well. Um, so really to maximize Chris's capability and potential, we've moved her as well over to the high school, um, into what is a, I call it the yellow room. It's a big space. It's gonna have all the scanning equipment. So in her downtime, she's gonna start scanning files. And we're hoping to make a significant dent. And what that will help us with is these files take up a ti- if you imagine that we have files back into the eighteen hundreds. Just imagine how many files we have and how much space that can free up as we get this stuff scanned. So that, and then we also have a number of other areas, um, just basic clerical pieces about entering kids into Lexia, IXL, our, our own email system, SchoolAG. Just keeping all those things updated. And there's a lot of things there that she can manage and handle. It's just a better use of her time, having her be at the high school. So, um, right now Chuck and Amy are still in the office space downstairs. My goal would be that we don't have to air condition this building at all next summer. Which typically we've done in the past because we've all been here, but if we're all out in the other buildings that are already air conditioned, that will be a huge cost savings because it's not a real efficient building. Um, we still have the window air conditioner for up here, but in terms of those office spaces. Um, so continuing to work on those solutions, but just better use our personnel and also address some of the issues that we haven't been able to. So instead of hiring another employee or hiring people to do scanning, um, Chris is gonna take and make that, uh, take that on and do that work. Um, one other thing I would just wanted to update that is not on the list here too, is, uh, we've been meeting with a group of staff and we're really looking at our teacher observation model. I try hard in this role not to ever take my teacher hat off and remember what were some of the challenges and struggles as a teacher. And I wanna make sure that, um, we're trying to do things to support them. And, you know, with calendar or PTO or a lot of the things that we've been able to talk about and solve over the last few years. Teacher evaluation observations, ones that's come up to me that they wanna look at. And, um, we're really, there's certain criteria we have to fill that the state requires. Um, but I really want the process to work for staff. I want it to be something that at the end of each year, they can walk away and say, you know what? This really benefited me as a teacher, you know, similar to Ally saying, this is some of the best professional development or training I've ever received. That's what we should be doing. And if it's not, we shouldn't be doing it. Um, so we're really looking at that model. We're, um, we're spending time unpacking. Our, our last conversation was really about peer observation, um, allowing, instead of having a formal buy-in administrator every year, maybe it's one every three years, which the state requires. But then in those off-years, allowing teachers to observe other teachers. Uh, because I think myself as a teacher, as a principal in the building where we did that and even talking with the teachers here, I think that staff being able to watch staff is the most powerful learning experience they have. So how do we get that as a part of what our model is? So we're gonna continue to meet on that and unpack each of those areas that the state requires. Our next meeting, I think we're gonna look at rubrics. Um, cause I also wanna have an effective rubric. I don't wanna just choose a rubric. Charlotte Danielson is the one everyone uses. If it isn't the best one or it doesn't work for our staff, then let's put some other ones and potentially use those. So a lot of work in that over the course of this year. I, I see it taking at least this year to do and then working together to come up with a plan. And then try it and figure out what works and doesn't work and continue to monitor and adjust it. So again, when staff walk away, they think it was a meaningful experience and not just something we did because we had to do it. So. Uh, and the last piece on here I have, the pack audio, or it's, it is just a lighting project right now. Um, Tony and I did visit a little bit about audio this morning. Um, but lighting is what really needs to be done. And that is scheduled to be done the first week of December. I think it'll be about three days. It'll be all LED, um, lighting and the capabilities will be state of the art essentially. And then they'll do two half-day trainings and that'll be with the directors. And then we're gonna have some kids involved in that as well. But we'll get that space up to par for sure, uh, on the lighting side of it. And then we'll, we'll visit about some of the sound things they need. I told Tony, let's do the same thing on the sound side. Um, we have some resources, as Chuck talked about, we've done better in some of those areas. That would be an LTFM. So in that, when you reference the roofs and we saved a few hundred thousand dollars, that's money that can go towards those pieces. So at least if the space is small and isn't quite what we want, the equipment in it will be as good as it, what anybody else has. So look forward to getting that project, uh, completed as well. And with that, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to six point two is the board member reports. We'll start with Amanda.
Nope.
Matt?
I don't have a report, but I have a mic, so I'm gonna say something. Um, two board retreats ago, we challenged, um, as a board to lead in social and emotional learning. And I would like to commend Ryan and staff and everybody, A-Team, for taking the reins and really running with something, social and emotional learning, to be a leader. Now, it's not always gonna work, but we're doing something. When Ryan says he's with twenty-three other superintendents and they're not knowing what to do. We're talking about, we're starting, we're starting to lead and walk. We're not gonna get anywhere unless we start doing that. And I just commend everybody in the district for taking on that part of the child and doing something about it as opposed to saying it's just a big issue. So thank you.
Well, if you look at the video that was in the weekly that Amy Holstein did, our staff and Mindy, many other times, our staff have been amazing. And, um, this would not happen, e- especially, and I've seen a couple at the elementary, I've seen, um, with the second step. And then I've seen some at the high school. And I was a little bit wondering how it would work at the high school, but literally to see the kids standing up and doing that, it's, they all do it. And the teachers do it with them. It's, I, I can't speak highly enough of how our teachers have embraced that work bad, because it wouldn't be successful. And we've talked about that with some of the providers that we use, that in some of their other schools, they just don't have the hundred percent buy-in. And we literally have, I, I, as, when I walk around the building during that time, I would say we have a hundred percent buy-in right now, which is great.
And I think again, it's some of that to move this world, of taking the chance of putting it in, the teachers putting in it and doing something because it's a total movement. But it also takes leadership and people to do it. So I just wanted to commend everybody for doing that because where we are right now, somebody has to do something. And I'm glad we're starting something. So I have a mic, sorry, but I just wanted to say.
Thanks, Matt.
Well said, Matt. I have no updates.
Chase, you've got updates.
I do. I was not at the last board meeting, so I've been to two, uh, Southwest Metro board meetings. Um, one thing I just wanna share, um, I'll send it out to the board too. I forgot my hard copy tonight. I, don't worry, strategically placed it at home. Um, so the delegate assembly is coming up December sixth and seventh, and I'll be at that for us. Um, Southwest Metro, along with some of our, uh, member districts, has put together some legislative priorities. And they would like our boards backing for that, um, at the delegate assembly. And so I'm gonna share these out with you guys. But a couple interesting ones that are on here. Um, one of them is opting out of statewide testing. So that was a big thing, um, the last two meetings, we've had discussion at Southwest Metro about opting out of statewide testing. We've had a lot of discussion on statewide testing. And the issue that comes forward, of course, is the families that wanna opt out. We don't want them to opt out, opt out, because there are students, that exceptional students most of the times. Um, so what the legislative platform is asking, either to end all statewide testing or to, um, simply not ding us for families that opt out. So that is one of the, uh, priorities. Again, um, Jordan is coming forward, um, with words of the state. They had an issue, um, I don't know if you wanna explain it?
I can explain it. So, um, it's the short version of it, and I won't, I won't even use the right cities. But, um, a student who had, um, been placed into foster care and incarcerated in a city in northern Minnesota came to JAF. Which is, JAF is essentially the jail school through South, Southwest Metro staffs that's in Jordan. But then the student became, uh, was placed as a residential student of Jordan. And then the student was transferred or left from there to Missouri. And Jordan was then getting billed, what we call a third-party billing. The home district actually has to pay the educational expenses and costs of that student. Now, I'll also say this, and I don't know if Darren talked about this, Minnesota is, I'm gonna say the only, um, there may be a couple others that actually, we actually do pay when kids go to other states. But if kids come from other states to us, they don't pay us. So that's a whole nother issue that needs to be tackled. But, so that, that's the goal of this, just is that there is a pot of money that's set aside at the state level and that the state would take. You know, they, they say there, there are, but, uh, you know, Matt was asked at that meeting, he hasn't seen any money from it yet. And this is probably two years ago this happened, but that's an extremely expensive piece. And the student was never, ever a student in Jordan. He was just placed at the JAF, which happens to be in Jordan. So Jordan becomes the residential district. So sometimes when you wonder what I do during the day, it's, it's these kind of crazy things that come up where we are like, are you, are you kidding? Like, what do you do here? But there's a lot of tentacles to this. I think the legislature in general, are we gonna continue to send money out of Minnesota? Because nobody else sends the money to us is another big issue as well. So.
That's, that's one of them. Another one is, um, board minutes, uh, recording them in the paper and the cost of that. Um, I'll send these out to you guys. If you have feedback or questions, uh, please forward it to me. And then I'll share that at my pre, um, pre-assembly meeting and come back with some information for the delegate assembly. Uh, so that was one piece. Um, a couple other things. It was exciting at our meeting, actually, um, St. Francis or Illina came and Southwest Metro had been given an ambulance for our CTE students there, um, to actual do drills on. Um, so that was kind of an exciting thing. I, I didn't think about bringing the phone, so, sorry. Um, and then we discuss, at the end of every meeting, we discuss updates in our districts. Um, I had discussed about our vaping sensors and everyone is intrigued by that because no one else is doing that in our eleven-member districts. And I also discussed the mock- And I also discussed the mock-up classroom that we're going to be doing, and Ryan actually just said to invite these other board members to come out to our school and check it out and see what we're doing. And then, I just, I gotta say this, last two meetings especially, so, again, with our updates as we go around, Bell Plain is in an awesome spot. Just sitting and listening to the other districts, Buffalo right now going out for referendums to be voted in November. If their operating referendum doesn't go through, they're gonna be cutting all of their junior high schools, they're gonna be making other cuts too, staff cuts. TCU, flat enrollment, I don't think any of the districts have their contracts settled yet. I thi, I think actually every district in the Southwest Metro was out for some operating referendum in need. And we're sitting at fifteen percent. I mean, it's just a credit to Ryan, so, and I left there at the last meeting and I texted him, I said, you know, kudos to you, wow, I go, I leave this meeting feeling like a champ and I did nothing but report what our district is like. So it's really a credit to Ryan. I, I'm excited to share at the Southwest Metro Board Meeting what a great spot Bell Plain is. So.
Ryan and Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry. And everybody else.
Chuck and I arm wrestle all the time about it. It's good.
Well, we know Chuck wins.
Not yet, right Chuck? No?
That's it? All right, thank you. And I do have, I don't have any tonight, so we'll move on. Number seven is the action item, seven point one is the MSHSL grant. The foundation grant will provide assistance to activity participants that call, qualify for free reduced lunches that need help in paying their activity fee. Administration recommends the approval of the MSHSL foundation grant application for two thousand nineteen and twenty. I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve this.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Seven point two is the assurance of compliance, the annual assurance of compliance reporting to MDE is attached. This is the assurances that Bell Plain Public Schools follows all the applicable state and federal laws. I am looking for a motion and a second to approve.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Seven point three is the two thousand nineteen, twenty activity fundraisers. Attached was the fundraisers for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve that as well.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Upcoming meetings, Monday, November eleventh, six o'clock is our next work session. Are we gonna be going to Chatfield?
We could do it at Chat, we can do it at Chatfield, maybe, sir. We'll do that.
Perfect.
Chatfield, six o'clock.
Yep.
November eleventh, be there. Then our next board meeting will be at six o'clock, November twenty-fifth, here at the district office. With that, I need a motion and a second to adjourn.
So move.
Second.